Okay, I think we'll get started. Call this committee to order. If you please, Brian, join me if you'd please.
(speaking in the background)
I move you to adjourn with the conference. Order. I hear second. I hear second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Do you hear a motion for the consent of that?
I would move to adjourn with the committee.
Do you hear a second to that? I'll try. Does the motion second any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, I just want to say, this is... We continue to be under unusual restrictions with COVID-19. We're going to try and talk as loud as we can tonight. I know you might be family members, but I guess I continue to be concerned with the people that we have here. What item are you here for?
For the Certified Serving Act for Connie.
For Connie?
Yep.
Okay. All right, we're going to try and get to you relatively quickly on that. But again, anything we could do where people wait outside until we're ready? You know, we're trying to keep this at a minimum for people that are in here tonight. It's very critical for us. Can you come up, please speak as loudly as you can? If you didn't want to wait outside, we'd make sure that we come and get you plenty of time. Okay, with that, committee report. On fire?
Nothing on fire, Don, we have a special committee.
Okay. Like hurry?
What I do have for the library, they still are... We still are working on a directory, a new library directory. And I was told that Roberts had also been working for the library director. The library is asking each of the four partners with the Joint Library to provide... help provide reimbursement for funds due to the library for the extra expenses as COVID... from COVID-19. This is in addition to the 2% increase that they're asking for funding for next year. So this is something we're going to have to discuss and see if there's any way... I guess I would approach maybe if we had some of those expenses, which I do have a list here, if that could be entered into the number file in any way that we could get reimbursed.
For Rouse's Recovery?
Yes.
Rouse's Recovery libraries are not... They don't qualify for it. And the Rouse's Recovery is something that we purchased and we wrote the check for and paid for. So if... I would not be comfortable receiving audit and trying to... We did honestly submit the same invoices to all four municipalities. And then we all submit the same. But libraries are not eligible for Rouse's Recovery, so... I think they're going to just have to take that out of their... They've got to have extra budget money from when they were closed.
Okay, we have the library people here tonight that are going to get you on.
Okay.
Do you get present and leave, so we don't keep you here all night? Susan, anything else from your perspective?
Uh, no, there is nothing else at this time.
Okay. EMS, we have a meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 with the EMS committee. I sent board copies of the latest report. I think the takeaway from there is we've had about 65 calls and they've averaged about 6 minutes and 13 seconds, which is very important people with response time. So that's my EMS update. Chairman's report, I sent the board. We've got copies of our proposed roads that we can do for next year. Potential crack sealing, crack filling and chip sealing areas. And we'll be looking at further detail when we finalize our budget, which is now scheduled for November 10. Public comment, does anyone want to speak on public comment tonight? Okay, hearing none on that. What I do want to do is I have talked with Mr. Felix about this, that we are right in the midst of engaging SEH as our provider. I think what I'd like to do is move up number 14, 15 and 16 for approval tonight. And if the board has any questions on that, please let Liz or me know. But I think we have that refined to the point that we're ready to have an emotion and pass it for the vote. So with that, I guess I'd start with number 14. Do you want to have any questions from the board with the view and update the language to the timely application of procedures of sub?
No.
Would anyone like the board to approve that? I saw you were... Well, you're a second?
I'm a second.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is carried. Second part of that discussion and action on Resolution 2020-3, updating Chapter 8, 113 scheduled for our fees. I think we're ready to vote on that as well. Would anyone like to make a motion to that and bring it to the floor?
So...
Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is carried. The next third and final one, a discussion and action on the driveway access permit application and the fee structure. We have all that on our packets. I'd like to have a motion to that to bring it to the floor for discussion.
I'll make that one.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is carried. And Liz, I want to, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for all of your continued help on that. It's greatly, greatly appreciated, so thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Liz.
Okay, so with that, then I think it's time for us to go to the library presentation and proposed budget. And then right after that, we're going to go to the Connie CSM. Hi, Shelley.
Hi, everybody. Let me know if you can't hear me, I'll try to talk through the mask.
We just asked, you just almost yelled to us.
Okay.
Because this is being recorded.
Okay.
And we have a problem picking it up with the recording.
Sure, absolutely. I know you asked me to be brief tonight because of circumstances and your busy agenda. I do have a very long PowerPoint about the library and what we've been doing during the pandemic. Didn't bring it. I'm going to just give you a very brief overview and then talk budget, okay? First of all, Shelley Tugis, I am the interim co-director along with my colleague Madeline Page at the library. And we just started in June after Latiana Morris resigned. Everybody closed, of course, back this spring. And while we did shut our doors, we did not close the library. We considered ourselves a library without walls. And we immediately converted to a virtual programming model. If you go to our YouTube channel, you'll see more than 100 videos from cooking demonstrations for kids to science activities and author interviews. And interviews with famous female engineers, including from as far away as Germany and Israel, to help girls see their futures in STEM careers. So things like that are on YouTube. We also opened a Discord forum for teens. We had better participation in that in the spring than we normally do in the building, which is phenomenal. And we also have interactive Zoom programming for all ages. We went to a virtual library center in terms of the resources, so you could be a one-stop shop for everything you needed to find in our community. And we answered phones continuously during that time. And frankly, a lot of those calls were some of our lonely senior citizens who needed to check in. We were the first library to go to the curb sign model when it was allowed. From a seven-week period, actually since April until the end of September, we have had 3,300 appointments, people coming to get books using the curb sign contactless pickup model, which has been wonderful. We were also one of the first to open. Our date was July 6. We have limited services and limited capacity, so for 10 to 2, we can take 15 people at a time. And in the first seven weeks, we had 5,171 visitors. We often have a line outside the building. A lot of people, as you know, would like to see some normalcy in their lives, and that includes going to the library. And I wish we were able to do more for them right now. But we currently don't have access to any of our toys, meeting rooms are closed, and, you know, here we are tonight with extra social distancing, so you all understand why. This summer, we did a lot of partnering. We brought subscription programming to school-age care, because they were unable to do a lot of the things they normally do with those kids in the summer. It was a real challenge for them to keep them engaged. We got electronic cards for every single student in our school district, so they could have access any time of the day into all of the digital resources that we have to offer. And we also did institutional cards, and this has been a really big hit. We are delivering bins of books to senior living centers. They're the people who haven't been coming back since we opened. And we noticed that right away, our regular seniors, they're just not ready. They're concerned for their welfare. So we decided to bring the books to them. So that's what we're doing right now. I'll just jump quickly to the COVID cost situation. You know, Hudson has been in this unit partnership for a number of years prior to me, prior to my predecessor. The other libraries in our system are getting their COVID costs reimbursed through the federal grants that are going to their cities. So the city of Hudson is probably going to be able to reimburse us. And the town of St. Joe, so they will probably be able to reimburse us. I'm still working, I need to contact with the village of North Hudson to see what their status is. What we did is we took the whole cost, and how do you do this fairly? We decided to divide it proportionately to what the partners' normal funding contributions are. And then we sent letters to each of the chairs of the boards, asking you to consider providing any of your federal funds if you're able to help us get reimbursement for those expenses. It's really hard to talk through this, I'm sorry. I feel like I'm winning.
You're doing a good job.
I haven't had to do this, I usually take the mask off at this point. So that's what we've been looking at for those reimbursements. And yes, we did save money while we were closed, because there was some of our staff who continued to work all of their hours, and then some that we couldn't bring in. We did the board last year adopted a deficit budget, so we are not coming out ahead at all. We're hoping to close most of the gap in that deficit. So what I have for you here in your hands out is our 2021 request, which is for $4,131, which is a 2% increase. Hudson has built 2% into their budget. They presented it last night to their finance committee and then to the council. I've met with Stan from North Hudson a couple of times. He said he is supportive of 2%. He needs to see as more data comes in. As all of you are probably are thinking the same thing, like we're still waiting to figure out what might happen, projections, more dollars, more COVID expenses. So we're getting really good feedback, but so far, we don't have votes committing any of the partners. 2% also was supported at the St. Joe meeting last month. And, you know, the one thing with COVID and how stressful it is for our communities, I'm really grateful that because of this partnership, the funding partners have been able to deliver savings to their taxpayers over the years. And so I've got the data that a previous director has kept. And from a five-year period, taxpayers in the town of Hudson have saved $450,000 versus being included in that county tax. This is what the exemption has saved you. So that is one thing at least we can feel good about in terms of what we've been able to do for the communities. And hopefully, the payoff is now when everything is so difficult for everybody. Our budget, the board adopted a preliminary budget, $915,000, almost $916,000. This is a 1.3% increase in expenditures. We are using reserves. Our board has some reserves from early on in the process of becoming the joint library. And I know a lot of you are familiar with that history already. And the board believes that we need to be spending those down. And it's not fair to sit on a stack of reserves to the taxpayers. So the plan is to spend them down over a series of years, probably three. So we have a budget that budgets $74,000 of those reserves into next year. The reason we have to sort of take that slow and carefully is because, you know, you sit here and work with budgets, we need to make sure our revenue intersects with that spend down at some point. So that's what we're working on right now in terms of our long-term plan. We did make cuts to technology, staff development and in our collection. We are looking for grants from our support organizations to help make up those funds in the collections, so we're able to keep up the selection of books and movies and digital resources that people need and want. We also have some unanswered questions in our budgets, just like you, related to what else might come our way with COVID. And also, as you know, we are in the search process for a new director. And how that will change staffing overall, we're not 100% certain. We are going to post the job in January. And the reason the board settled on that timeframe is they have the job description ready, the posting ready. If we get it out there here in a few weeks, collect the information, sit through it, decide our candidates, we're getting into the holidays. And that becomes a real challenge. So it was suggested to us by the IFLIS system that we post right away in January and take it from there and avoid that whole holiday. And of course, we're going to continue Zoom interviews. As much as we would love to meet people in person, that's going to be... That's going to be where we're all at still this winter. So I'm going to take a breath and see if I can answer any of your questions, because I appreciate being here tonight. And I would love also, Mr. Chair, not to just be out here when it's time to talk about money, but if it works into your agendas, to be able to come out and do some updates on things that we're doing in the library that are different and unique. Love to be able to share those with you.
Great. Thank you, Shelley. Ready, any brief questions from the board members? Mr. Fox here.
2% of our three-year average is $207,448.97, not $210.75.
It's not 2%.
And we basically maintain the 2% increase on the three-year average, not on last year's?
Not the 2% on the three-year average, 2% over last year.
I know, and we're saying, no, we should only do it on the three-year average.
Well, you know, that's going to ultimately be your decision. This is the request that we're putting in. And, you know, I respect where you're at. And I see it as my job to advocate for what is legal and needed. And your job to just balance it with everything else you need to do.
That is it.
But thank you for that point.
So was 2020's a little, 206,000?
Well, that's what we gave for 2020.
Yeah.
We were only required to give...
Because 2020 was a hundred and...
2020, we were required to give 206,325, 202,325. We gave 206,371. So, but the three-year average is 203,381, and 2% on top of that is 207, not 210.
Yes, and we're one of the few, as you know, libraries in the state that have this three-year average law. The other ones have to pay the county limit.
And the county can raise taxes for like...
And the county does not have...
And then you're not allowed to...
It doesn't apply to their levies.
It doesn't make any sense.
It does not, yes, you're right, it does not apply. They can exempt it from their levies, so they're in a very different position.
Yes.
Are there any other questions for Shelley today?
I have a couple of questions.
The youngs?
So Shelley indicated that there's a 1.5% increase in expenditures.
1.3.
1.3, yeah, okay, that's right. So if your expenditures are going up 1.3, why two? You know, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, that's a great question, thank you. It... The expenditures are significantly higher than the revenues, because we are drawing down from the reserves. So the reserve amount is packed into those revenues, if that makes sense. So therefore, that little bit of increase just helps us keep our... our reserves just holding us a little bit longer. I think next year, some people disagree, I think next year is going to be just as bad, if not worse. And we need to be really delicate with that reserve balance to make sure we are not up against the wall too soon, too fast.
And, you know, on the Tony tax exception and the distribution of it, Hudson gets a fraction, everybody else gets the full amount.
Yes.
And what is your position on that, what are you doing in both that?
We did go in this year, I met a couple of commissioners, I met with the administrative committee. And we were unable to get that committee to support going back to 100%. It did go to a vote before the board, and Paul Burney, who's our board president and is now on the county board, made a very strong case to get us to 100%. And usually, my understanding is there was only one or two votes that were ever supportive of returning to 100%. He was able to get another three or four. So we're moving in that direction. I've talked to a couple of the commissioners about, you know, maybe the compromise is to stagger in back to 100%. And it's this full swing from 70 to 100 that's challenging to some of the taxpayers, to some of the people in the other communities. And you all know the history, and there's some plainly, there's anger out there about what happened. So that is what I'm hoping to talk to people about. Maybe we move to 80%, and then to 90%. I mean, if we had done something like that three or four years ago, we'd be here.
Well, one other item is that, to your credit, you know, you're more efficient, for example, than the River Falls library per circulation, okay? So, you know, you put in that, you know, a cap or an average or something like that, and then you end up with the same amount of the tax distribution, but that's become all better.
Yeah, you know, River Falls has a phenomenal system, they really do, and they're great people. The way the state is and everything, but the bottom line is is their revenue stream is about $2.5 million. We have a bigger service area, a bigger library, our revenue stream is about $850,000. So they're three times larger than their budget. They pay double what our staff made, which has made it really hard for us to keep people, even in a pandemic, believe it or not. So it does pose a lot of challenges. We are the lowest per capita in the area. I think Roberts is up to $70 per capita, we're at about 25. Monomie's just above us by like 12 cents. River Falls is in the $50 per capita range. So we're really certainly efficient, perhaps to the point where we're reaching a detriment related to that.
Good. We have a lot of items on our agenda tonight, so if there's other issues that you want, which independently, which Shelley, please do real quick, then we're going to move on.
With the uncertainty with COVID?
Yes.
In the next six months and maybe a year, depending on what I know.
Yeah.
Are you guys doing anything to reduce spending, reduce your budgets?
Depending on, again, what happens with the director, we might not replace certain staff. I mean, just in full disclosure, I'm going to apply. And if I'm hired, I'm not going to replace my former job. We just can't right now. We can't. Do we need it? Yes.
Which is?
Well, we can't. I'm program coordinator, I'm a full-time adult services coordinator. You know, I cannot speak for what a new director might decide that he or she wants, but that is sort of the plan we're looking for right now.
Okay. New line.
Okay. Feel free to reach out, Madeline or I, or if you have any comments.
If we could deal with the director with Shelley off-line.
Please do.
Thank you so much, Shelley. Okay, next we have one lot CSM from Grand Central, San Antonio County at 675 King Road.
Hey there. I'm Joe from GNS Land Solutions.
Can you speak real nice, loud and fast?
I'm Joe from GNS Land Solutions.
Okay.
At the meeting, Ryan Moore asked me to bring some extra copies of some maps. I can pass them on or...
Sure. We'll just stay right there, we'll just pass them around.
The map that's coming around shows the whole area, all the way from the west side of King Road, through, I think it contains all of most of Connie's property up to I-94 and then south to Riley Lane. And then the lot that they're proposing to create is right there in the middle off of Martha and the Riley Lane. There's a temporary cul-de-sac on Riley Lane at this point. And road frontage, you can see that the road frontage, if you look at the Certified Serving Act, there's 70, a little over 75 feet of road frontage between the outlot that they own, which is the existing driveway that's there now that serves Connie's residents and the other lot, lot 1 of Lot 5, 16, page 4281, is showing on the Certified Serving Act. So that's where they would like to come. That 75 feet frontage is where they would like to come for the driveway to service this lot.
So I have a couple of questions for the board, just not to influence, but just to ask questions. Mr. Felix had called me several times on this, and I've had several different plans, one of which, I passed out to the board, and I know you have your map here tonight, which in fact, the lot would be on the other side of the existing driveway that's there. I just have two questions, are the two homes that are there tonight, are they on separate lots now?
Well, Connie's own, the remainder of that 40, I don't know how to explain it. The better parts are two 40s. And there's one lot up there, if you look at the Certified Serving Act, you can see in the dash line, it's Lot 1, that is the other lot. So there's two residences currently using a shared driveway.
Okay, so first, on this map, just so we're clear tonight, if we were to drive east from Kitty Road and continue on that driveway, the first home that we would hit sits on an independent lot.
Correct.
Independent tax parcel, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then we continue on that shared driveway. And the second home sits on a separate tax parcel, but a much bigger lot. Is that another way of seeing it?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And then, so that existing driveway, that shared, two homes share one driveway, which you can do, would remain intact, is what you're proposing tonight.
Yes.
But your proposal is to come off of Riley, the Riley cul-de-sac, which is shown here then, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and you have access, you have needed access to that?
Well, the road actually fronts on Connie's land, yes.
Okay, so there's no doubt that they could get access to this proposed lot, which would not have access onto Riley.
Correct.
And would not be able to access that shared driveway.
Correct.
I just want to make sure, we understand what you're asking?
Yep, we got it.
Then I also want to clarify, because I did share with Mr. Felix, we are in the midst of going with our SEH, so we will be submitting this to them for their review as well, but that's not going to materially add to the cost. It will be a additional cost, but it's not going to be outrageous for the time. Do you have any sense as to what will be done to remake the land here?
We don't, but if we, at this point, and the reason that we don't is because the current subdivision standards that both Connie and the county have, don't allow for a road to go down behind Connie's house. If you look on there, you can see where I've got a proposed possible road, but it doesn't work under the current standards. So what we did when we looked at this, when we considered lot two, as you see it on the certified survey map here, is I tried to allow everything for everything in case there's any further development. And that could be a road going north and east up around, that's why the lot is curved. It could be just to expand that cul-de-sac into Connie's property. There's been discussions with the proposed purchaser of lot two, that it's part of the deed restriction, that if there's ever any development in the future, that lot two would be required to give up whatever was needed for a temporary cul-de-sac or road extension. And that would happen just right down on the very western triangle down there. And of course, if it's economically feasible, Riley Road may extend further onto Kitty Road.
Questions of the board?
I don't have any questions, Dan, the only thing I wanted to say, and he already said it, was the driveway for this lot may change in the future, depending on what happens with the extension of Riley Road, it may change the location of that driveway in the future.
And the address.
And the address number. You know what I mean? Because depending on which road it comes off of and which driveway location you pick, you know what I mean, in the future? That's all. No big deal.
Any other questions of the board? While you're thinking about your question, basically, for the benefit of the people in the audience, so this looks like a tremendous amount of drop-off here on your total map, if you have to the east.
Yeah, the green is excess of, I'm sorry, the, can't see the colors. The green is in excess of 20%, the red is in excess of 25%.
Okay. And I noticed in the minutes, you need to go into bed with the county as well, but the way you have this laid out, obviously, if you have adequate room for that driveway, kind of building site, before basically the back third of the site drops off, is that another way to say it?
That's correct.
Is this the same plan that went to the plan submission?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion, folks, board members? Everybody's studying all your total life, we'll be here a long time.
I would move approval of the lot number two CSM for Grandin-Samantha, Kitty at 675 King Road. Is that presented?
Would we be willing to add to your motion, the subject to review by our engineer and the county tip?
The county's already reviewed it.
They have?
Yes.
And why would you want the engineer to review it, Dan?
I couldn't hear you.
Then why would you want the engineer to review it?
Because I visited with Mr. Felix about this, that he would be coming in right now as our engineers.
I thought you said you were going to ask him to talk to him ahead of time.
And you have to speak really nice and loud.
I thought he was going to talk to him ahead of time before he got here.
He didn't.
I don't see an issue, though. So the answer to your question is, if the county's already reviewed it, I don't think it's necessary to have the engineering firm review it at this point. I'd say no. I don't want to add it to my motion.
Okay, motion made.
Wait, we're not done with the motion, we have flat review fee, 350 lots, so.
I was just going to say that.
Check.
Subdivision subject to the approval process, sacred county community development department. Town is provided with blanket easement to provide inspection, maintenance, and repairs to retention ponds, drainageways, culverts within the subdivision as required. House number? $60.
Okay, not to interrupt you, you're also going to have to help me, because in the planning division meeting manager, it says right in the middle that you've not received feedback yet from the county.
At that time, we had not, this letter is dated September 30.
So where's the feedback from the county? You have something written from them?
Yeah. You guys should have gotten it. The letter right here. You guys have CC'd on the count, or I mean on the letter. And I can tell you, their only number one concern was what we had talked about, about the road and possible changes in the road. Driveway as proposed will access from temporary cul-de-sac, which is currently a temporary cul-de-sac, for Connie with rear set in addition, changes to existing layout may be anticipated upon road extension in the future. Will the location of this driveway interfere with future road, future plan improvements? Do alternative options exist to avoid potential conflict in the future? Which I had this discussion with Sarah from the zoning debate yesterday.
And that's from Sarah?
Mm-hmm.
And when was that, Sarah?
The date on the letter is September 30.
Was that sent to me?
Well, to the county, county manager?
I don't remember a copy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a copy of that.
Well, just take the copy his. If that's all that's in it, then that's.
All right, so we're going to finish up the, your motion, Ken?
Well, we have prior review fees and 350, subdivision subject to sacred county community development, town shall be provided with blanket easement to provide inspection, maintenance, or repairs of the retention ponds, drainageways, culverts within the CSM. Developers shall pay the town $125 for stormwater management fees. Developers shall remove any existing field accesses or driveways. Final CSM approval contingent upon all fees being paid, and house numbers for $60, one line.
You have that motion?
That's your motion?
Yes.
Go your second? Go your second, can you second it?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, folks, the board members? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick question, do those checks come individually, or can they all be on one?
No, it's just one.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck with your house.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Hartman Hall, this final plan for Hidden Ladders.
We've got our 11 by 17 size copies. I'm standing for Ty, I think he had nothing to go to, so. Guys have probably seen this a bunch of times, so this is the final plat. There this afternoon, it looks like construction is almost completely receding and mulching, and now we have, looks like today, most of it, looks like all the building pads were all seeded and mulched. So I think construction is about 95% complete, it looks like. Ty has told me, has not heard, hasn't got comments from community development yet, but he has received comments from the county surveyor, and they are incorporated on this map.
So the county surveyor comments are on this final one?
Are on here, direct. Yes, that's what he told me.
And then, and then, say again, the community development comments are?
We haven't got final comments on community development.
And that would be Sarah's.
That is, Sarah.
Yeah.
Okay, question of the board members?
I don't see any issues, Dan. And I do have Jeff's letter that he did define the inspection here.
Yeah.
That he sent to Sarah, Sarah on September 15.
Yeah, we have that, correct. And we're going to talk about the vote. Issue on Lake is a totally separate line item.
Yes.
Your motion to approve, bring it to the floor?
I would like to make the motion. I move approval of the final plat of Hidden Ladders for Hartman Development located in the southeast quarter, the southwest quarter of section 12, and part of the northwest quarter, the northeast quarter, and part of the northeast quarter of section, northeast quarter of section 13, township 20 line north, arranged 19 west, town of Hudson, St. Craig County, Wisconsin, including part of lot one of CSM, volume 24, page 57, 43, document number 926 to 16, consisting of 20 lots and two outlots, and 55.2 acres, exclusive roads, lot numbers from the plaque shown as lots one through 20, and outlots one and two, with the following condition. Lot review of the rate of $350 a lot for a toll of $7,700 to be paid to the town of Hudson, road signs totaling $1,775, plus the cost of any other signs deemed necessary. Three blacktops to be completed with a compacted thickness of three inches, dotted two lifts within one year from today. Work not completed requires an extension request to the town of Hudson, and here we both have those standby letter credit or bond for a period of not less than two years in the amount of $97,000, based on $23.50 per foot, including shouldering must be given to the town for 4,130 feet of roadway to be named Moon Glow Road, Alexander Road, and 100th Avenue. Developers shall pay $50 to the town of Hudson to cover the cost of acquired registered copies of the final plat. This subdivision is also subject to the approval process of St. Craig County Development Department. Six, the developer shall pay a fee of $300 to cover the cost of St. Craig County blacktop inspection. Seven, the town shall be provided with a blanket easement to provide inspection, maintenance, and repairs to the retention ponds, drainageways, and culverts within the subdivision as required. Number eight, the final plat approval, the developer will provide the town with a calculated preliminary plat that the county provides, including any design for signage. Nine, the developer shall pay the town $125 a lot for a toll of $2,750 to the town for administrative stormwater maintenance fees. Ten, the developer shall remove any previously existing field accesses or driveways not going to be used. Eleven, classifications of all roads in the subdivision shall be set as Class C highways, while the final plat approval contingent upon all fees being paid within one week of the final plat approval. Thirteen, fire and house numbers at $60 a lot totaling $1,200, and the developer shall be given credit for $2,175 already prepaid to the town for signage. That's my motion.
Are you second to that?
I'll second it.
I just got probably the masks, your very first one, you said 20 lots of $350?
Yeah.
I thought you said it was 7,700.
Prior review fees, $7,700.
Yes.
How much was it?
22 lots.
22?
Well, it's 20 lots and two other lots.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, the motion is carried. Before we go on to that, where do you want me to sign on this? Anywhere? Anyone to date that, you want both of them to sign?
Aye, just the front one, it's fine.
I'll do both.
And just for everybody's information, I did, I already sent an email or text to Mike Hartman today, Joe Murtha and I texted on Monday, Mike wanted me to wait till the seating was done before we put the signage up. Joe Murtha was going to go out and stake the signage now that the seating was done, get Digger's hotline out to mark the locations, and hopefully by the end of this week, early part of next week, the two, the stop sign, the two-speed limit signs and the stop head sign will be put up. Okay, just so you know, that is.
They're ready, yeah.
Well, it's looking very nice, Doctor.
Yes, it's beautiful.
Thank you. All right, you left.
I can send it to you.
You don't agree.
You don't care your checkbook, though?
I don't, sorry, I don't have my checkbook.
You have my second key, or you want me to, or you just want me to send it to Mike? Well, I can send it to you, he'll call me.
Whatever, he probably won't.
Hey, Doc, don't leave it, I was watching here for two minutes, so you dropped this off.
Oh, yes.
White Hartman, correct?
Yes.
And these are the guidelines, we can look it up, these are the guidelines for creating local voting ordinances in your town. So I do want to slide into the next item then, which is discussion and action on Shank Lake being a non-motorized lake. And the board's probably well aware of what's going on there, but just quickly, so we can be efficient tonight, if the ordinary high water level wasn't as high as it was, we wouldn't have to worry about having access to Shank Lake for the public. It's up high enough now that there's, has to be access to it, there's been a easement designated off from 100th Avenue. The concern that the, Mike Hartman has, and we as a town have, is that this lake is really not set up for access and motorized boats. So just these boats, but certainly kayaks, canoes, you know, the residential homes around there. So the request was made that the town would support and take action on designating this as a non-motorized lake, which I think we could do tonight, but then we have to discover and discern what we need to do in addition to that, if we need to create an ordinance to make it official.
I think maybe the second to the last page in there basically describes kind of what the town needs to do, or shows a sample ordinance. So I think it goes through your basic ordinance procedure with public hearing and all that kind of stuff.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to good humor, he just gave it to me at 6:30 tonight.
I don't, I handed it to you.
Haven't you got that, Tony? Right, speed read, but I think what we can do, so we can go on record, well, I don't want to appreciate what the other board members say, but I do want to get a motion, so we bring it to the floor at the end. Does anyone want to make a motion that you designate Shank Lake as a non-motorized lake? So, go your second to that. Okay, further discussion?
I have no problem with that. Perch Lake's been a non-motorized for years, and it works out just fine. I don't see any issue with that, I think it's a good idea. It's only 12 feet deep, you know what I mean?
If it is, we don't have the numbers yet.
That's what Mike told me. So, you know, that's what the deal is.
If it's motorized, it also has to have shoreline zoning, so we would have to change, we'd have to do that, too.
Well, I think a motion has been made and seconded, I think, for our purposes tonight. If you hadn't handed me this tonight, I wouldn't have known we would have to update our ordinances, but I guess, I guess we'll take a look at that and see if we do need to. Okay, but a motion has been made, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Doc.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming in.
Have a good one, Ty.
You too.
Okay, discussion on action on a site plan for Deagle storage.
Hello, Ray. Tim Long here, I'm one of the owners of Deagle Storage along with Chad Swanson here. We're just asking to accept the whole here to, we need space for maintenance equipment, so this is not for any financial consideration or asking. So this is not for any financial consideration or asking for any funding or any money. So it's just for the purpose of, our sites have grown so much and we maintain ourselves all the site work. So the tow truck and storage, the salt and all that kind of stuff, we need to expand that space. So that's what we're looking at here.
So for your site plans, you're just adding like a 11 by 25?
Yeah, small space in the front because our setback is so deep. So just need a space to put for a single car garage such as, and then the other space would be a 10 by 25.
Did you bring the stormwater maintenance agreement?
I forgot, I found my desk, bring it along.
I have it.
I know, I have it, it's sitting on my desk. I added it on the pile and I just grabbed it.
Just make it, kids who don't like getting that done, we need it.
I've got it in mine.
So how about from the last day's form?
Yep.
Yep.
I got it.
That was all I had.
Okay, easy now.
So if it gets moved tonight, we'll have to condition it back.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, and I know it was in 2019 or, what did you come in for your original site? I mean, we did a lot of looking at this, so.
Yeah, that's what then.
That was way back.
Yeah, 18, maybe 2018?
Yeah, we didn't say somewhere like that, it was when we built.
It was even before the dry dock.
Yeah, the technical building and so. And those are the conditions for your stormwater management agreement.
Correct, when they finally got from the county and whatever, but yeah.
Right. Okay, so just these little, just these little add-ons?
Just a little small add-on, that's all right.
Yep, okay. Is there a motion to be made, just bring it to the floor?
I would make a motion to approve a site plan for Eagle Storage. The Eagle Storage Division contingent on getting the stormwater.
If by means are, are you second to that?
I'm in.
I'm in. Okay, motion's made to approve it subject to getting the stormwater made in the Google Play.
What was the other, 580 or?
53.
53.
That's what I had, I thought you were going to say 580.
I'm sorry.
No.
I do have a question before we do that.
Yes.
And go back to the dry docks.
Yeah.
And I, I tried to look today and I couldn't see because there was so much stuff down there by the archery. Originally coming off of these buildings, the water ran down the downspouse right underneath the apartment lot, out the side of the hill onto the hill.
Yes.
Was that resolved in the, in the storm line, the disagreement, was it?
Yes.
Okay, and I did, because I haven't looked at anything for that many years to know whether that ever got resolved.
It's similar, it's revised.
So it goes out to the south thing, is what you're talking about?
Yes, three south, yes.
Okay, 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 that was it.
Yeah, and it looks like you're building it out of pile and rock today, is that some type of a filtration pad there?
Oh, there's a, that was just a concrete pad.
Testing pad?
It's, it's been removed already.
Yep, okay. Uh, any further discussion from the board? Motion been made, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, thanks for waiting as long as you did.
Yeah, thank you, it's time to, it's time to stop.
Just give us a call at nine and we'll let you know because we're closing the public and then I'll know you're outside, we'll operate there.
I'll go for it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And then we'll have to get him to sign.
Yep. It's been answered.
You might just want to call him.
Because he needs to sign it and then he needs to give a call.
What's your number?
Uh, 715.
Okay.
220.
Okay.
2984.
The problem then last time it wasn't notarized, so you have to have a notary for the signature, otherwise the law won't accept.
Then we can do that.
Okay, that's fine.
Hopefully if you come out here.
Do you want to meet up? You have a meeting tomorrow.
I'll go get nine.
You have a meeting tomorrow, Dave, don't you, Tom?
I do.
Yeah, so maybe we make it a little bit later because he has a chance to leave me to this out here. Okay, you guys will make that and then that's.
Call me, the truth like about 11 o'clock, how would that work?
Call you around that?
Sure.
Yeah, we can do that, I'll get.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion of action on stormwater.
So I work with Tammy to do all stormwater inspections and that needed to be done. And she sent over the report, there was nothing major, there was just a line of stuff that we just came a motion to the board, think it's okay to let a lot of the homeowners want to do the work. Seems like a lot of people have time right now and not a lot of money, so they would rather do it themselves than, and then the county will go back out in the spring and double check to make sure, and if they haven't taken care of it by May, then they will schedule the work to be done and it'll be built back to homeowners. So we've had that a few times already where the, you know, developer or the homeowners want just to take care of it themselves and it's always been taken care of at this point. So I think it's worth a shot to give them the chance to. I've heard from two different subdivisions, Tammy's heard from quite a few, I think, so I think it, you know, it'd be nice if the board gave the homeowners a shot to clean it up.
I agree.
Would, would Tammy be open to writing a letter of, and just saying if this, you know, go ahead, but if it's not done by such and such?
Yeah, that's what they're, it says in here, they will get a letter.
Each will get a letter.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I went after, yeah.
I'd say we get approval made, or October 5th letter.
And if there's a motion on that, I, I would add, that paper been late.
Yes.
That says, you know, like about 5 o'clock today.
Yes, I agree.
But those are the meat and potatoes of what needs to be done.
Right, it says ask for questions at the second page. I'm okay with this, this is good. I'd say we move approval of.
Well, no, this is, but she did send all the reports then, that Don asked for them. But there's nothing major that needs to be done, so you guys have all that that Don sent.
I'm saying the reports that I sent to the board member, 5 o'clock today.
Right, but I mean, this letter states it all, so if you approve this letter, let her go ahead just to take care of it and then we'll review it again.
Right. So let me just circle back one more time, because we're all saying the same thing. I think the beauty of the reports that I sent you at 5 o'clock tonight would be the basis of handing it to the homeowners association, saying, here's what we found. Because it goes lot by lot, there's a tree here, you moved a swale there. This is what you need to clean up by next spring, so. Okay, is there a, is there a motion been made yet in that?
I will make the motion that we approved Tammy doing the developments that she recommended on the October 5th letter. Cottonwood South, Alexander Meadows, Yellowstone, Yellowstone Valley, and Whispering Oaks, Phase 1 and 2.
Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second to that. And I just have a clarification, questions, because once it's motion been made and it's off our plate. So is, is Tammy the keeper of the follow-up with the homeowners then?
Well, somebody over there is, either Tammy or the other person that's doing it.
Okay, I'm saying it's not us.
It's not us.
That's why I want to make sure, it's, it's not, it's not, we don't have to have court letters, we have follow-up letters, we haven't done this.
No.
Okay.
All right, we can just make that part of the motion, then the county sends the letters. It says on there that they're going to work with the town to notify landowners about the activities. County will, but when I dropped her, she said they would send them out. They always have before, we've never done it, so.
I agree, we've never.
We don't do it, so the county.
Do you want to add to your motion?
Yeah, make it part of the motion.
That's cleaner.
County's sending the letters to landowner?
Yes.
And then in the spring, then I have it on by the spring?
Follow-up inspection.
Well, that's number four, county staff will complete.
Right. All right. I, but just for discussion and encouragement, if you have a chance, let's look at those additional reports, because they're quite thorough, so we can see what, what needs to be done. All right, motion been made, it's been seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion's carried. Next, a discussion of action on animal control contract.
That's me. I all of a sudden realized that it wasn't part of our animal controls responsibility to do the inspections of the cattle.
Eddie.
Chicken poops as part of his contract from last year, when I did that last spring, but having Rick not do that anymore. So all I want to do is amend that to indicate that that's girls' contract. Even though he agreed in the meeting, I just want to make it as part of his agreement in his contract that he's going to make those inspections, that's all.
So it's in our ordinance, but now it's in his contract to do it?
Right.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Are you a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Set a date for 2021 budget hearing for November 10th, 2020 at 6:00 P.M.
Well, we're not going to make it at 6:00 P.M., no, we're going to make it immediately following the annual meeting, that's going to be held November 10th at 5:00 P.M.
Make, make sure everybody writes that down, because I visited with Vicki about that. We still need to have our annual meeting before the end of the year, and we're going to schedule it at 5, 5:00 P.M. on November 10th. And she said, then this will follow immediately after that, so if it's five minutes, it's at 5:05. Are you, are you a motion to approve that date and the timing?
So FYI, I will be at a town that week.
You will be?
You're what?
I will be at a town that week.
Second Tuesday is always the bad end of the budget meeting.
We'll do our best.
I don't know what else you can, I mean, we got to get it done because I don't have the, I mean, we got to get the numbers, I only have so much time to get the number three sheets done.
Yeah, right. We have to.
You already have your form.
Yeah, oh yeah, we need a form.
Yeah, because you got, you have to, the only part you have to have the form for is for the special town board meeting that you're, and you don't need it for the budget hearing. Because it has nothing to do with the town board, the budget hearing doesn't. The annual meeting, you don't need a form and special meeting of the electors. So, I mean, we're going to have two special meeting of the electors that day, so it's just going to be back and forth.
Okay, are you a motion to approve the dates and time for those meetings?
Totally.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. We'll take the votes for it.
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed.
Okay.
Are you guys going to have any more budget working sessions?
My turn.
Are you going to have any more budget working sessions?
Well, I mean, I.
It's the budget, budget final.
I'm disappointed in not being involved with that.
You know, and then.
I've already seen everything, so I mean, I just, I just want to be there, but that's okay.
We certainly want to exclude you. If we have a, if we have a working session before then, we might.
Yeah.
Well, you should have the budget finalized before this meeting, so.
Right.
Maybe you should schedule another working session right now.
Well, let's do that, then, then we've got belt and suspenders. Let's, let's set the time for running working session that works for everybody right now. Because as I share with you, that's all, all in your electronic packets. We've got all the road things back for us to look at. I'm open, you tell me, second here.
I can call it the 21st through the 25th.
Vicki, if we had it earlier today, would you like to join us, or could you join us, or, you know?
I'm doing in-person absentee voting. Um, in here, so I don't know how.
Do you want to do it next week?
Next week works for me.
Yeah, let's, let's do it next week, it's only two weeks away from the election, so.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm, I'm open, we can do it on Monday or Tuesday, if we want to do it earlier in the week. I guess I'd prefer to do it.
Monday's going to work for me, I'm working.
Oh yeah, Monday, Monday's Columbus Day, or whatever they call it now. Um.
And it's observed Canadian Thanksgiving Day.
Well, I don't think I've done.
I mean, I'm on the 13th.
Well, I'm going to ditch this personally, can I have the 13th?
13th, it's my. 13th works for you?
Yeah.
What time?
What time?
What time, Tom?
Want to do it at 4?
Sure.
That work for everyone?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll be on for an hour, hour and a half, I've got a lot of reading.
Oh yeah, I sure hope so. I think something's been told very wrong for the, for the. Okay, so next.
We can go earlier if you want. We can go earlier if you want, just.
No.
Do you want to go a little earlier, do you want to make a free three?
We should be done in the middle.
I agree, we should be, there's no reason.
You guys have, you've already went over most of the numbers, right?
Right.
Okay, so Tuesday, October 13th, 4:00 P.M., budget working session here. And then Vicki will vote. I don't think we've put that before.
No.
Okay. Discussion and action on face mask requirements at the town hall. Vicki, you asked, we put on, you want?
Well, I just need to, I just need, I talked to the attorney or whatever, so obviously there's a statewide mandate right now, everybody's required to wear one. However, there's some litigation out there, so it could turn at any time, depending on what the judge hears at first and decide. I don't have time to play games, going back and forth, I need to know what the rules are. Um, we can be more restrictive than the state or county or whatever, whoever makes whatever rules. We can't be less restrictive. So I just need the board to decide what we want to do, because I need to let my poll workers know so that whoever decides to back out, I can start, you know, recruiting more poll workers.
And just to support Vicki, we, it's almost like a business or corp council type deal, but because it's our property, we can have our rules and restrictions. So I, I would think, I would think we certainly should have anybody that's here on behalf of the, working on behalf of the town, be required to wear a mask.
Well, I think anybody at any time should be required to wear a mask at the town hall if you're going to make the requirement.
Right.
Um, on voting day, obviously it's not a requirement, because state law dictates what the requirement is to vote. So we can have voters that come in, but anybody else that's working here or coming in for meetings or doing whatever should, you know, if that's what you're going to do, you know, you have to decide as the board what you're going to require. But like I said, I just am trying to get, um, if you pass it tonight, I can let my poll workers know that it's going to be a requirement. If you don't pass it tonight, I can let them know that I don't know what the answer is, we'll have to see what the rule is on November 3rd. So it, it just gives my poll workers the option if they're going to work or not work.
I think we're far enough into this COVID-19 that I think everybody that's working here should be, and I've worked the election for decades, I think everybody here should be wearing a mask during the, that is working here during the election.
Thank you.
She's right, there will, I know there's people, I can name a couple of them that'll come here that won't wear a mask.
Well, we're in this room with bad ventilation, we don't have good ventilation in here, we don't have.
You actually have pretty good ventilation in here.
They leave doors open.
Well, we have to. We're required to leave the doors open.
We're required, yeah, because I don't have.
And actually, I looked at all your, all your makeup, you do take outside air in on all units.
That's good.
And when your election's happening, you should run those fans nonstop, just bring the air in, exchange it.
But we're going to be required to leave the doors open. It's poll again, no matter what, the temperature is outside, we have to leave the doors open.
There aren't more air in doing that than you're like the doors open.
Well, I know.
So just so you know.
Yeah.
When that comes out.
We don't have filters or anything like that, you know?
There are filters, but they're not.
Right, air purifier, things, whatever. Um, you know, we're in this room for 16, 18, I don't know, 20 hours, 24, who knows? You know, we don't know how long we're going to be here, so when you're sitting.
There are filters you can get, there are 13 that do filter that, if you're interested in that too. They're expensive, but, like expensive, it's probably about 60 bucks for the two of them.
Do you hear a motion to bring this to the floor?
Yes, so moved.
What are you moving?
What are you moving?
I'm moving that we require face masks for everyone at Anderson Town Hall, and who's working here.
Do you hear a second to that?
I'll second.
And I'd like to amend it during COVID-19, during COVID-19, that's my amendment.
Okay.
Are you okay with that? You know what I mean, so that it doesn't extend beyond that.
Well, we need to give Vicki and Chris all the tools in the toolbox. You know, people, give them the opt, if they don't want to wear a mask, understood, but if they're going to be here, they have to have a mask. Okay, there's been a motion, any further discussion?
I guess, you know, COVID-19, my sense isn't really that relevant to it, because things might change, I hope that's what we're talking about, so. So I think, you know, you should just say, for 60 days, and then we will address it again at that point in time.
I agree with that.
Really?
No, because now we got, we got more elections coming up, so.
You got two more.
Just wait, we can, I can put it back on the agenda again, and we can revisit it, or.
If we just say COVID, I mean, I don't want to say it, if we just say COVID-19, that just leaves a little bit of, what's, who's going to say what COVID?
Somebody reverses it, you know, I think what you want is, you want, you want to know with advance.
February and April?
Then review in May of 2021, after the two elections.
Do you know what I mean, we're just comfortable with that? So we're really trying to take off the COVID-19 and just review, town board review. We know people are going to walk in the vote without a mask, we know all that.
Yeah, we can't require voters.
Right, that is a bad issue, it's the people that are here.
And if something miraculously happens on November 4th, or something, I mean, that's what everybody keeps telling me, that on November 4th, this is all going to be gone. All right, so if something happens, I'll put it on the December agenda.
Or January, or whatever, if we get some information that's very.
Okay.
I mean, if someone wants it on, just, yeah, if you decide you want it on, let me know, we'll put it on the very next agenda.
Okay. Motion's been made, seconded, masks are required, it's through, what month did you?
May of 2021.
Through April, because you're going to review it at May.
Oh, in the May, okay.
It's going to be reviewed at the May board meeting.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion's carried.
And like I said, if somebody wants it on earlier, just let me know, we'll put it on, maybe, it's easy to just.
Yeah, you can look at the situation as it holds. Yeah, because it changes.
And it gives, it gives good direction against for the poll workers, it's a consistency from the board, the community.
Well, they can't argue, they can't, either you wear the mask or you can't work the election.
I think we brought out an item, the communication line for future agendas, anything the board wants to.
Well, Liz has got a hand up.
I also have, I talked to the city Hudson, they're not sending library money through Rostre Recovery. St. Joe's not sending it, North Hudson's not sending it. We're all under the same assumption, we all read the rules. We didn't buy it, we didn't pay for it, their libraries are uncovered, I'm not taking the risk to get audited either, that already about. So, that's where I got it. Aaron is also the one that told me that they are way under budget, so. If they're under budget, I mean, because I'm over budget. Actually, I'm not over budget, because I got reimbursed 20 grand.
Good selling.
Yep, 20,086.
He's got, got reimbursed, my machine got reimbursed, the tables got reimbursed.
Everything we requested, yeah, yeah.
Cleaning, COVID.
That was my, my question I was going to bring up is, now, do you have, and can you have, a running list of what you've asked for and what we have and have not gotten reimbursed?
I've gotten reimbursed for every single thing I put on there, because I've been extremely cautious about what I put on there.
Because we can continue getting the cleaning, just being up there.
Right. So I do, I will, I mean, I'll bill it, and I'll, I'll only have two more, I'll have this one.
Right, but can we get a list of what you asked for, and what, in case it would be something, somebody might.
You got something to add?
Yeah, what do you want me to add?
It's like, I wanted to know if we could get the lights on the building, the bathroom door, checked it out, yes. So I got a hold of third electricity and said, you need to get that done and get it in and get it built, so that we can put that in by the November billing.
Well, is there something on the avenue you want built, or what?
Well, just to help me, just to see what types of things happen, in case something would come to mind, not that I'm.
I don't know, was all the cleaning supplies, was postage, well, I have two different things here too, so I had my election money too. So my election money, covered envelopes, postage, I think that's pretty much all we did, because I only got $6,000, so it didn't take long. The rest of the postage, these, the tables, the machine, all the cleaning supplies, all.
More postage, I think we got.
Plexiglas.
Well, yeah, these, these plexiglass things.
What about getting the, the town hall, getting the vents and stuff cleaned like that?
Yes, I'm sending that too, but I couldn't send it, because we had to wait for the bill.
No, I'm.
So that, Happy Ducks is getting sent, the cleaning, more cleaning or whatever.
Yeah, I just got COVID.
We just got the October bill, so I can, we literally just cut the check, so now, because you have to have the check and everything written. The light fixtures. I think that's it.
Yeah, I don't think we have anything else.
So will that money run out at the end of the year, or that's going to be ongoing?
Oh, no, it's, we have two, we have two more recorded periods, we're in a recorded period right now, because they added another one. And then there's the one in November, and that's it, and then whatever money is left over, it just disappears unless we choose to give it to someone.
And all the extra salaries that we had to do and extra work.
Oh, I did have, our COVID money, I put it on there, we are reimbursed for that.
Yeah, we are reimbursed for that.
Um, the paper folder that we bought, I'm reimbursed for that.
Good.
Pretty much every supply, actually that I bought for the elections.
How about the broken hand dryer in the bathroom?
No, that's not COVID. Tom, Tim did try to get me, and I'm like, no.
I tried, that's. And I said, I'd like to replace the, no.
And the toilet, no.
No, we can't.
And the light switch, no.
Just remember, we all paid for this one way or another.
Right, yeah, it's coming out of our pocket one way or another.
But, yeah, I mean, I, there are, I mean, literally, I have staff, I mean, I have kept track, all the glue for the envelopes.
Highlighters?
Highlighters, the, I don't know, what else did we buy? Envelopes, um.
Oh, yeah, we have my.
Everything.
The tiny stuff.
Oh, my God, that's crazy.
Crazy.
Yeah, so, crazy.
So, yeah, we got it all reimbursed, so I'm back to.
Nice job, Liz.
Thank you.
For coming to.
We know we're here, what we could have gotten, but that's all we've got, you know what I mean? I hope, would you say 147, or something stupid like that?
But we don't have required department or police department, if we had required department or police department, that money would have been gone in the first round.
Liz, I know you wanted to say something, Stevie had your hand up, the question on this?
No, I was going to ask a different question.
Okay. Liz, you wanted to share something with us?
Yes, I just wanted to do a follow-up, we have a lot to have all of here together, back to the subdivision portion, I did talk to Ellen, and followed up on some of the questions that you had brought forth during the working session. The county road ordinance, they are still working on it, backed up because of COVID, multiple reasons. They hope to have that in place by the first of the year, and that basically puts all of the responsibility of road issues back to the communities. Chapter 236 of the Wisconsin statute requires the county involvement of the review. You would ask whether there are duplication of services and costs, and technically, yes, because they are required by statute to be involved to give their review. So they'll be paying, still collecting their fees for their review. And she said there's no change in fees, because we have an engineer, they don't have two sets of fees. Stormwater, going back with your stormwater issue, yes, we are still going to continue with the county through the annual process like we're just doing right now. And I have been working with Tammy to put in writing the actual steps that are taken, in regard to whether I work with Vicki in that last year. We'll finish that up now that we know where we're going with that. She said their county is open to any changes, anytime, just let them know. Happy to work with us, very happy that we moved on and got our own engineer. She said they will no longer collect them for roads, as it's town responsibility. And she thought, because we did the cooperative thing for this year, and there may not be anything less for this year too, but she thought maybe starting January 1, 2021, to complete the whole policy change. And an agreement is not required, because an agreement that they had with the other two communities, that they have agreements with, pertains to roads, and that's going to be taken care of with the ordinance change.
So we got to figure out what to collect for roads, then starting January.
So the base, the county wise used to collect the fees, and they're not going to do that?
No.
So now we are.
I mean, the estimate will come in from the engineer, he does the review, and then we collect it when you do the motion.
Right.
So we can do that at the preliminary?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, all of these.
And I, and I will help if you want me to, to do that suggested motion, I have that on my, things to do.
I don't have a clue about that, because we've never done any of that.
Right, so we'll get the, we'll get the amounts, because there's going to be fees that are paid at preliminary, and there's going to be fees that are paid at final.
Yes, different fees.
Probably two different forms.
Right.
So will they still collect the stormwater?
She thought that that would probably be the best at this point yet, because they are still involved in the overall stormwater review for the whole town.
Okay.
And they also have hired an additional staff person to assist the community development department that is experienced in stormwater.
So if they do that, they probably, the county highway could still collect to do the payment inspections on too?
Uh, no, no, that goes back to the town. But the reason on the stormwater is because the stormwater standards in the county are more restrictive, and the developer has to go by what is more restrictive. So the town engineers are looking at the town standards, the county is looking at the county standards, and for sure, the stormwater is more restrictive in the county. So that's why she thought that would still be town responsibility.
And we collect inspection fee anyway for black toppings?
Yes, that's.
We always have. On that one.
Thank you.
And thank you for all of your input and your help, and I'm so happy.
Thank you for being happy.
Got to look for the littlest things in this time, sir.
All right, any other, adjourned, any other comments?
Do you have something, did you?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if the board, given tomorrow night's at the county for that public hearing, for that ordinance that they're proposing, has the board thought about making a resolution to go towards that?
I know, I brought it up, and I just can, I know they tabled it at one point, and now they seem, now they're in the town hall, they get input on it tomorrow. I'm kind of waiting to see what happens with that, and then if they in fact do come out with something, I would propose putting together some. I, I personally don't want the county going into the town hall, like, tell restaurants what they can and can't do. I just don't, I just don't, I don't think it's the, the health, the county health officer's place to come in and tell people, tell restaurants what they're going to do with their business, even if.
There's even stuff about coming to people's homes.
Yeah.
And removing kids if the parents have COVID and the children don't.
I don't see the point in doing it before, like you say, I mean, when it's happening for the worse, when I am watching it, and I want to do that meeting tomorrow.
It's supposed to be just that, right?
There's only 20 people out at the meeting itself, so I don't even think I'm going to bother going down there, they can Zoom it.
Said they were only going to have 500 for the Zoom too.
Really?
I think that thing's going to get packed.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, I mean, there's going to be people at the county, definitely.
It's interesting, because I got a brother-in-law that lives in Pierce County, and he said, the residents of Pierce County are not happy with what's happened with the health service person from the county, going around and doing exactly what Ken is saying.
I've heard that the St. Craig County home officers are a little more reasonable. I don't know personally, but I personally, they're a little more reasonable than that. But the one in Pierce County, I mean, if we came into that situation, I, I went to Lowe's in Arlington, I just, I just couldn't do it. And I didn't, and he said it's crazy. Well, yeah, they're going in threatening with their licenses, telling towns, you need to revoke your library license. Even the sheriff was going in, I mean, the actual sheriff was going in businesses and threatening them, which is like, the sheriff's not going to do that, but.
I, I just brought it up, I need to.
I was, I was thinking of saying something here, because I did bring it up the last meeting, it wasn't, so. I guess I'm just waiting for the dust to settle on and see what happens.
Okay, is there more, is there more that can be done?
Who would do it here?
Do I hear a second?
Second.